I didn't. I didn't. I saw that and I felt the same way. Because I didn't. That very last page of the agenda about removing something from the agenda.
I've never seen it before.
So, in your sister's case.
I've never seen that before. If I had, I had to get paid.
This is my list.
Okay.
Okay, I'm glad that. Neither dad stuff. While I say that, maybe we don't want to do any stuff.
Go up to the program. Friday night. I think she's learned quite a bit. Each time she goes to a class, she brings more stuff back.
Good.
Now, that's my understanding. We need to talk with the list because she apparently is an expert. But my understanding, in order to open up a public hearing, we have to recess out of the city council meeting to do a public hearing.
We're doing it now. You don't have to do it that way.
You don't really have to recess out, open up the public hearing, and then you close the public hearing and come back into.
No, we're going to open it to a public hearing. I think we've done it before.
We had to recess out of our original meeting because I had to recess out of the BB Congress meeting to open up a public hearing and reopen. Close the public hearing and reopen the meeting.
That's what we used to do in separate agenda. And how would we?
Ah, yes. Or had it early, and it's early or.
This meeting of the Caldwell City Council, City of Caldwell, Texas, is now called to order. Today's date is Tuesday, June 21st, 2022. A quorum is present, so we will proceed. The invocation this evening will be led by Councilman Jesse Enrique.
Our beloved Father, we would like to thank you for this day. As we gather for our city, continue to guide us as we discuss what best work you need in your name we pray.
Amen.
The pledge to the American and Texas flag will be led by U.S. Army veteran Tony Zaccarelli.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Do we have any citizens to be heard on the agenda? Do we have any citizens to be heard on city-related? First item on the agenda consists of the minutes from the last meeting and some additional considerations. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, they stand approved as read. Do we have a motion to accept the items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
All second.
All in favor of accepting the items on the consent agenda, raise your right hand. Any opposed, raise your right hand. Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is discussion and possible action on adopting resolution number 2022-06-00 for a 20-foot access easement for water utility service on parcel ID number 11042 and 13881. Do you think that's worth?
Yes, ma'am. So, tonight, this item is for the easement to get water services. Property that we're looking at, how like we did it out to the last page. It's going to be, uh, Brazzaville RV Park and then the property to be used to that. Uh, so the easement is just a 20-foot easement, throw in water lines an inch, you know, go in there, uh, to allow that property to be used to develop. Um, and then from there, it'll be that northern down three lines with 117 acres. So that, what you have in your packet is the draft version, and then you have the final copy up here for your application. But basically, it's just so great that service provided out there. And they are outside this 18 minutes, so they will pay, um, city.
Is a 10-inch water line sufficient for future development out that way? Including fire hydrants and all that good stuff?
Yeah, maybe it will be at this point if we expand the system any further that way, as we talked in that workshop, it'll require a water tower out that way just because of the pressure planes working.
Did you have something?
No, no, I was ready.
So, what you're looking at now is just easements so that water line can be placed in there and then the city, should we have any issues, would we have access to go in and take repairs?
Is there any further discussion about this item? Do we have a motion to adopt resolution number 2022-06-00 for a 20-foot access easement for water utility service on parcel ID number 11042 and 13881?
Make a motion.
Do we have a second on this motion?
All second.
All in favor of adopting resolution number 2022-06-00, raise your right hand. Any opposed, raise your right hand. Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is discussion and possible action on a mobile substation memo of understanding between the LCRA Transmission Services Corporation and the City of Caldwell. That is Mr. White.
The MOU specifically, as it states there, is for a mobile substation. So, more specifically, this would be for a mobile transformer. So, we're trying to put this in place so we have a backup plan if we were ever have a catastrophic failure on the transformer that we have there in the yard. So, LCRA has been kind enough to work with us and say that, you know, there'll be that backup, they'll lend us a transformer that would be brought in on a trailer, they'd back it in, work out all the details with Entergy, who is our current transmission operator, to get it hooked up. So, if we ever did have a catastrophic failure, we might be off eight to 10 hours because we already have a plan in place versus three to four weeks should we not, and, you know, depending on what's going on, availability of a transformer, things of that sort. So, um, I will tell you, this MOU has been reviewed by our legal team. They, uh, had a couple of suggestions to, uh, tweak it. LCRA was not willing to make that. They basically have the same template with every city that they serve. And there's nothing bad, it's just, just the way, if there were to be, if damages were to occur, it'd just be a different way that we assert our immunity as a city. So, they're okay with us moving forward on it. But I'm happy to answer any questions. You got the draft, well, it's not even the draft, you got the MOU there that references charges, I didn't include those because they vary from year to year, but, um, I feel like this is a backup plan that we have to have.
So being proactive?
Probably.
Does counsel have any more questions?
I move we enter into this memorandum of understanding with LCRA.
Do we have a second on this motion?
Second.
All in favor of entering into an agreement with LCRA, raise your right hand. Any opposed, raise your right hand. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is discussion and possible action on granting Camden White the authority to enter into a mural agreement with the not Rowan, a Houston-area murals.
Okay, so this item, uh, as we brought before, um, is to allow Camden to enter into a contract with the NAC. Um, we wanted to go ahead and do it this way so that way we can take the contract forward when she is available, because we don't really know when exactly she's going to be able to do the mural at this time. And we're still waiting on the $10,000 that we had allocated and A&amp;M cover for the murals. We're still waiting on them to reimburse us. So that contract will come back to y'all to admit that one. So this is a separate contract to give us to, no, it's not, it's a separate action to get us to where we can have a contract initiated with the NAC whenever that time allows us.
This is for the second mural, uh, that Main Street was doing.
So that's at the corner of the buck.
So before it was three for basically 10,000, so now it's going to be two for 10,000?
It'll be one, 5,000, and then this one would be 15. And the Friends of Main Street, they said that they would put in 5,000 towards the extra expense. Yeah, so that one will be the.
Just the one mural will be 15?
Yeah, that one mural will be 15,000. It'll be, I mean, the work that she does and the quality is way, way more.
It's next level.
I mean, this was student work. And that was why the price was $5,000 for each one of those three to begin with because of the student labor and the professor working on it. So, this is, this is an actual mural, murals.
Uh, can I ask, Leah Zaccarelli, she's the president of Main Street Board, do you have anything to add for the project?
I was just going to remind everybody, we had a contract with A&amp;M to do three. We were, they would design them with our coordination and produce three. They produced one, they have completely agreed that they would reimburse us for bounds of that contract. So moving forward, we have a plan, we found a new muralist, but we're in a whole different level with professional painters, um, which is why this is still about 5,000 under market. So, um, I suggest this price is very good and Friends is happy, um, I believe, to contribute, to continue to participate and make sure this happens. And then we will pursue a plan for the third, because we have, we would like to do three murals in town, but the third one is not even, uh, under consideration yet.
Any more discussion on this item? Do we have a motion granting the city administrator the authority to enter into a mural agreement with the not Rowan? Do we have a second for the motion?
All second.
All in favor of authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with the not Rowan for the Main Street mural project, raise your right hand. Any opposed, raise your right hand. Motion passes. Next, we will hear from Forrest regarding the final plat proposal ID number 16012. This is in fact a public hearing, a brief public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the city council of the City of Caldwell, Burleson County, Texas, will convene in a public hearing at the city hall at this time. The city council will consider the submission of a final plat for a commercial industrial subdivision of approximately 105.03 acres.
So, if you remember back in March, we brought forward the final class of this project, which is the Catfleet subdivision. Um, it's located, uh, on the north side of 21, uh, across from the hospital. And essentially, this is subdividing the property to the 105 acres into, um, two pieces. So you'll have, uh, phase one will be the backside of the property, and that's where they'll start the project. And then phase two is the remainder of the property, um, which is about 10 acres. And so, um, the notice requirements that we had to do, it went out to 200, so a regular amount of property, um, so it was about, I'm not saying 40, uh, citizens that were notified. And then I had two citizens call and they just want more information about it. So, nobody said they were opposed or, um, in favor of it, it was just them asking additional questions to be back. So, um, that's basically it. Do you all have any questions on it?
I'm in, it's a public hearing, right?
Yes.
Do I? I just want to confirm that back in April, when we had the meeting, and then the June one, are they the same, it looks like it's the same plat, right?
As is in.
And then, um, I would assume that the darker blue down or there, which is the backside by the industrial park, is that where they're going to do more of their traffic entrances? Or are they going to start doing traffic from the hotel down to the, um, the little buildings, the storage buildings? Where, where's all this traffic going to go in and out of, uh, for this?
For the first phase, it'll come in off of industrial, so from the industrial park side. And then eventually, when they do phase two, then that'll be where the rest of the traffic is going to come to connect to the 21.
So then the city and the state will have to start putting traffic lights and different things like that and changing highways and?
I don't know about traffic lights, but there will definitely be entrances and egresses that will put on that.
Okay, and so it's just the total area there that's their track, so nothing's going to change?
Is there any additional public input? Any additional discussion from the council?
This is for phase one, fill up, come back for phase two, whatever they do.
They'll have to do a final plat for phase two.
So what's the difference on the center and the five acres, is it called phase one and phase two, or do they have more?
So, this, uh, this particular one is calling out the back part of the property, but when I do the notice, it's for the current track, just because it's not subdivided.
Okay, so it's got phase one there and then phase two on the highway.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me, is phase one industrial building, or is it home?
It's going to be a commercial industrial facility, so phase, phase one is going to have a 50,000 square foot building, and that'll be where they'll do manufacturing, uh, police vehicles to outfit him, and then they'll have a 20,000 square foot office building.
And then phase two?
Phase two, we don't know this time.
So phase two, they are not presenting a question?
May I add anything to the concept? I think right now it'll be, it's developed with easements and they're right there.
But it'll all be commercial, uh, for, for, I thought, a year ago, when this was all under concept, that they talked about, you know, housing for their employees also. And this is all, this is our.
How far does that property, does it come out to, uh, 100 miles, or does it come out, uh, parallel with the fifth line there, or, or the municipal tie into 141?
141, so it, uh.
Or there'll be an inspection too?
So there, there is a, you, um, you pull up, uh.
What's that one, the 141?
You can just, you can just go to the, click the maps, click the map.
Click the map.
How far up does the phase one go? Or do you have a?
I'll, I'll say.
Do you have satellite?
Yes. So you can turn off. Okay, so this is the property right here, where it's all, where it's created. So, phase one, phase one is essentially the property you have, so this piece to the north is what's going to be developed from phase one, so that's everything from the overdrive to the industrial park, to the middle of the property where that position is, and into the land of the east side on kind of 102. And then, to your question, so this piece right here is where the property gets 21, and then there is a little right-of-way that was dedicated at some point, and so they might have a road at some point that connects there. But the main road that they'll have to come over 21 as part of phase two would be, and that would be something that they'll have to work and figure out. And then I'm sure you saw any of that.
Yes, is there an estimated time of completion?
At this time, we don't have any, we don't have any.
Are you talking about phase one or phase two?
Phase one.
Phase one.
Are they not pouring the slab?
No.
Better than like by the end of July, they're going to be pouring the slab by the end of July?
There's been a lot of slowdown with, you know, product availability and things of that nature.
Any more discussion? Do we have a motion to approve the final plat for Catfleet subdivision located on parcel ID number 16012? Do we have a second on the motion? All those in favor of approving the final plat for Catfleet subdivision located in parcel 16012, raise your right hand. Any opposed, raise your right hand. Motion passes.
All second.
You have a second?
Right.
Still majority vote. Now we will hear from our administrative team, city administrator Camden White. Do you have anything?
You're on the bubble, huh?
Sorry.
Still, it's been busy, our, a lot of our grad projects, we discussed in the workshop, those are still rolling, we continue to have meetings on those, um, ERCOT projects, we continue to have meetings on that, continuing to watch our, our power supply and see where that is, and I don't know if everybody noticed, there was a explosion at the Freeport LNG facility that's kind of helped push natural gas prices back down. So we are going to kind of reach back out to a couple of suppliers and see if they're willing to provide some better pricing here in the near future. Um, just continue to, to look through that. It seemed like we got all kinds of stuff going on. Specific?
Um, is there any type of update on the city hall?
We are, are continuing to work through with, with the architect and, and looking through kind of some of the inspections to see what, what all, well, not just inspections of where we're at, but also what product we already have onsite, so we can continue to, to put forth the scope for work, we can push out.
Uh, Forrest Williams, community development director. Melissa Gonzalez, city secretary. TML meeting, 10 meeting on June 30th, um, anyone interested in attending? It'll be, I've got you, Fluker Will, uh, at 6:00 PM. Uh, individual councilman, Mr. Lawrence, do you have anything?
Well, uh, we finally got, took two years, we finally got new population signs out now at this point. I thought we were growing, we're going backwards, so.
But you have to keep in mind, the census was taken in 2020 during COVID, and I do not believe any city in the United States would be accurate.
Well, the point, the point I make when people come through, we only have 4,000 more, have to count feather in our guess, at this point.
You wanted 4,000?
Well, they are moving up to 4,000, so.
Yeah, we did move up with, yes.
I thought we'd be on top of the next one, but anyway. Wish I could have enjoyed 4,000 plus one more.
I think after the folks moved into Arrowhead subdivision, it's far past 3393, so we can't do it again for 10 years, so. And let's see, Mr. Novak?
The other day, I saw that the splash pad was closed, and then I saw we had some bills and areas that I've been working together.
It's not, we, um, we had it up and working for a day or two, and then we, we had some more leaks on the splash pad. Uh, we're working to, kind of through a process of, you know, what's causing those issues, so we're trying to start with, I think, was it today or tomorrow? He came out, he came out today and kind of looked at our backflow preventer, and then we're going to look at the pressure regulator, and then keep going back and forth, because something is continuing, we're having the same issue, it's busting pipes off the main manifold that feeds that thing. So, um, instead of just going back and patching, we're, we're digging into that real problem.
Does that affect the, the aeration system? I noticed that was off the faucet.
Does.
Fountains in the lakes.
I had it run for years.
Those have been down for a while.
Oh, have they?
Yeah. No, they, they. I think we looked at it.
I dreamt about it.
Well, no, we, we were looking at it because, because Mayor brought it up before, and we, we were going to look at replacements and, I think they're several thousand dollars each, but like I said, that's a priority of the council that we can put into next year's budget.
And how's the water system holding?
Water system, no, no issues. Open a lot of water. There you go.
Uh, Mr. McCullough? Do you have anything?
No, nothing.
Mr. Enrique? Uh, I would like to thank the electrical team of Jerry Zabodny, Glenn Frieda, Ronnie Anderson, and Andrew Pitts for helping get the trust moved and set up for the first Main Street concert they did this on Friday. It was very hot. They were very helpful, it is very much appreciated. Also, thanks to Doris Heeden, Arnold Manuel, and Sam Kelly for their help setting up, uh, before, during, and after the first Main Street concert. Again, it was pretty toasty on that asphalt, and they were very helpful, so, um, anybody else?
Well, I'll add to that, I really appreciate our park staff, we're hosting the 10-year, um, All-Star tournament over at Davidson Creek Park, and they've done a. over at Davidson Creek Park, and they've done a fantastic job of getting everything ready, working over the weekend, picking up trash, so really appreciate them. Yes.
Yes. Burn ban.
Now, you said something, any left for, or finding these vandalizing our library?
Yes, we know who the culprits are. But it is, uh, it's working.
Are they all backed up, or?
We're working to figure out how to replace the water conduits, the lines after the party. So we're trying to figure out more sturdy box that will be less easily vandalized.
Anything else? The final items on the agenda are the department and community reports, is there any discussion you had concerning these reports? Chief Horns is our community statement cell?
Yes, ma'am, as far as I know.
Give it inside for twenty minutes.
No. Why can't you change?
The, there was a Juneteenth parade Saturday, I think there were far more participants than there were spectators, but hey, we had a good time, so. Any discussion on these reports, Seth? Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Do we have a second? All in favor of adjourned the meeting, raise your right hand. Motion passes, meeting is adjourned.